Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 14th, 2025 East Lansing Planning Commission Meeting. Mr. Bartley, would you please take role?
I will.
Commissioner Chapin.
Present.
Commissioner Denault. Commissioner Hendricks. Commissioner Lapine. Commissioner Overby.
Here.
Commissioner Putz.
Here.
Commissioner Savaloski.
Here.
Vice Chair Wagner.
Here.
And Chair Sullivan.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Overby, seconded by Vice Chair Wagner. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Agenda approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9th, 2025 and the April 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Putz.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Overby. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved for those two meetings. All right, that takes us on to item number two, committee reports. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Bartley.
Thank you for our first committee. We have age-friendly. Commissioner Chapin, do you have anything?
Just a brief update. We meet tomorrow, and we'll have more to report likely at our next Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting will be on May 28th of the Planning Commission, and so the age-friendly meeting tomorrow. The intent is to finalize some changes to the progress report, and we'll bring that as an informational item to a future meeting as well. As far as the comprehensive plan update coordinating committee, the committee hasn't met since the last time you met. However, we're still in our review period for the comprehensive plan. We've been out spreading the word, and I would ask for this commission to also spread the word to your networks that we are looking for feedback until June 11th. We have a meeting, or excuse me, an open house next week on May 21st here at Hannah Community Center, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. So if you don't have anything, if you miss coming to Hannah on a Wednesday night, I have an opportunity for you. So 5:30 to 7:00 here, right here in this room in the banquet hall, is one plan, two plan, red plan, blue plan, which is sort of an open house for all the different planning processes that are going on in the city, including the comprehensive plan. So really hope that you and everyone listening and all those folks in the audience.
What was the date again?
Attend. That's next Wednesday, May 21st, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. here at Hannah Community Center. And then finally, the Green Code Study Committee, that committee met on Monday, decided on a couple of recommendations to do with stormwater runoff mitigation, and will be forwarding those to the city council, we expect, in June. We had DPW engineering staff present. We've been working with them to make sure they could get to a meeting, and they had a consultant on hand as well. Good discussion, and I think that the committee is happy to forward something to council about stormwater. I think that after we do so and get those recommendations into the approval process, the committee will then move on to other focus items, so different topics. That's all for the committee reports from me.
Great summary. Thank you. Any questions for city staff?
What time was that meeting on, the 20th, 21st?
On the 21st is 5:30 p.m.
5:30.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item number three, staff reports.
My only staff report is, well, I guess, number one, I wanted to recognize our senior planner, Alicia Wrighton, who has been with us for just over a year. We celebrated her one-year anniversary on April 29th, so we're very glad to have her join the team and still glad to have her on. So thanks for being here. And also, I just wanted to bring up to the commission, we've talked about this before a couple of times, but not recently. There has been some perennial interest in changing, shifting the start time of this commission earlier. We've talked with our camera crew and TV folks, and they could make a 6:30 start work, but not earlier than that. So if that would be helpful to this commission to move your start time a half an hour earlier, I just wanted to sort of put that out there and check the commission's temperature on that. We wouldn't typically make any changes for a couple of months, but just if that's of interest, we can look into that more. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, in particular on the 6:30 p.m. potential start time? I don't think we have to decide tonight, but if everybody could consider that before the next meeting?
I do. I do.
Commissioner Overby?
Thirty minutes to me doesn't matter, so I'm comfortable with the seven o'clock. I mean, if the majority of the commission wants 6:30, I would be okay with 6:30, but seven o'clock is on my calendar and in my planning and gives me enough time to scarf down dinner before I come.
I like 6:30 if we could end earlier.
Well, that would be the intent.
That sounds like a challenge.
Periodically, we have meetings that extend.
The co-shooter down there.
Really late, so.
Yeah, it works for me if it works for the commission, but I think we, there's members that aren't here, obviously, so maybe we could send an email.
Oh, yes.
Just to gauge their reaction.
Chelsea had some comments about that. I'm flexible either way. It's fine by me.
Yep. All right. Great. Well, you have some initial feedback there, so any other questions for city staff before we move on? Seeing none, that takes us on to item number four, commissioner announcements. Along with this is the standard disclosure of conflicts of interest for anything on tonight's agenda. So are there any commissioner announcements or conflicts of interest you want to disclose? All right, seeing none. That takes us on to item number five, communications from citizens. First up is written communications. Unless I missed anything, I didn't see anything in the agenda packet for written communications, so that takes us on to item number 5.2. Verbal from the, oh.
Sorry, I just want to mention, there was one written communication, but that was to do with the second item, or excuse me, the second unfinished item tonight, ordinance 1546. That's been added to your packet, but also is, was printed out, so that's on your table. Just want to call attention to that, and I'll bring it up in that case as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my apologies. I did remember you bringing that up. I have not had a chance to read it yet, but we'll read it after the meeting. Okay, that takes us on to verbal from the audience. This is your time to come forward and address the commission on anything on or off tonight's agenda. We do have no public hearings, and if you do come up, I ask that you identify yourself. I do see we have one card up here from Dale Inman for item 7.1. If you prefer to go after staff gives their overview, that's fine as well. Yeah, typically, staff will give their overview, and then you can address any questions we have for city staff after their overview. Are there any other members of the public that wish to come forward? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody online in the queue?
No one in the queue.
All right, takes care of that. So as I said, we have no public hearings tonight, so that takes us on to unfinished business. First up is item 7.1, consideration of a request from Dale Inman for a site plan approval located at 601 Abbott Road. The applicant request is to construct a new condo building containing 32 units. The property is zoned RM 32, City Center Multiple Family Residential District. I forget who is covering this. Grace?
Grace and me, Associate Planner. So this application in front of you at the previous Planning Commission meeting, there was a public hearing. We did not receive any comments from the public at that time. The application is largely unchanged from the previous meeting. I would just add that there were some small revisions made to the stormwater calculations at the request of engineering. The overall results are the same, that there is increased amount of green space and less impervious surface area. Just the numbers are slightly tweaked, and engineering responded that that was acceptable to them. Otherwise, the application is largely the same. Landon has pulled up. The rendering, I know one of the commissioner concerns last time was the availability of covered bike parking. So in this current rendering, there is an overhang that does somewhat cover the proposed bike parking. Additionally, there is some space within the parking garage that's beneath the building that could possibly be constructed to add indoor bike parking. It depends on the feasibility of that when they get to the building phase. Landon's kind of circling it with his mouse in between those two parking spaces. That's an area of the foundation of the building that could possibly be used as bike storage if the construction plans show that that's possible. So they are exploring the possibility of having more covered bike parking, as was requested. So I guess that's really all I have. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions from commissioners for city staff? So with the adjustment for the bicycle parking, was there any change in the number of parking spaces?
No.
Okay. Seeing no additional comments or questions, the applicant is here. If you'd like to come and address the commission with any updates or answer a few potential questions?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dale Inman, Troy, Michigan. Applicant, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think everything's been addressed, so.
So as Grace had said, so there's 206 square feet of less impervious surface that's now green space, so my understanding is correct that the overall stormwater impact isn't that positive based on what's currently on the site? Okay. Any additional questions?
I do have just a quick question. What is your timeframe for this construction?
Well, if we get council approval in a couple of weeks, we probably hire the architect to start with construction drawings in the next 60 days. After that, probably taking 60 to 90 days to design it and then start construction in the late fall.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there any ballpark on estimated construction time? Just curious, following up on that.
Any estimated what?
Estimated construction time, once you break ground.
10 months to 12 months.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Overby?
Thank you, Joe. There is currently a wall on that property that runs onto Abbott, and the renderings, it looks like you won't be retaining any of that wall. Can you just address that question?
Yeah, well, when we get into the final engineering, we'll know that with certainty, but I think we can save the walls along Abbott Street, but along Fern Street, I'm not sure we can.
Right.
But we're going to try to save them. They're good-looking walls.
Yes, they are. I think the city paid substantial money for them, too.
I don't think we could do better than that.
Thank you.
Great. Any additional comments or questions?
Can I just add one thing?
Please.
In the packet in the staff report, there are two suggested motions in there. The Planning Commission does have to make a determination on either granting or denying the requested parking waiver, as well as providing a recommendation on the site plan to council. So the Planning Commission is the body with the authority to grant that or deny that parking waiver. So there are two separate actions that need to be taken.
Great, so two separate votes.
Can I have a quick question on that?
Commissioner Overby?
Yeah, just perhaps this shows my naivety, but the sample motions as presented, we would approve the parking before we approve the project, and that order seems backward to me. I.
Sounds like you're getting ready to make a motion and reverse the.
With that.
Yeah, you can absolutely do it in either order. I just put it that way because I figured if you deny the parking, then the site plan as is doesn't really work, but that's, it's absolutely up to you on how you would like to proceed with that.
It's a, yeah, good flag and great explanation, so that makes sense.
Thank you very much, Grace.
Okay, so if someone wants to make a motion, then we can deliberate and talk about this and potentially vote on it, on both items, both votes?
Well, I'm glad to make a motion. I'm not going to honor Grace's suggestion. I move to approve the requested parking waiver associated with the site plan PSPR 25-0001 to allow 35 parking spaces on site. The commission finds that the application does meet the standards for a waiver to be granted pursuant to section 50-443 (B), parentheses 3, parentheses B, parentheses 1.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Overby. Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, I think Commissioner Putz beat you to it, so second. All right, discussion. Who would like to go first?
I'm glad to jump in on this.
Commissioner Overby, please.
I support this request and will be voting in favor of it, but I also believe that there really is not a sufficient parking, even with this additional parking that we're going to approve for the potential residents of this condominium association. And it's already crowded in that neighborhood, and I think this will add to the crowding and the problems with parking. But that said, I do plan to vote in favor of this motion.
I want to vote in favor of it, too. I think it's expensive to create underground parking, and I think they've gone, you know, to big lengths to do that and to minimize the asphalt and cement coverage on the outside, so, and to keep the parking spaces outside. So I think it's a good plan, and I think it's well thought out, so I'm going to vote yes.
I agree. It's a really clever use of space to cram all that in and still have it be usable space, but also increasing green space.
Right.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I'm thumbs up.
Okay. Yeah, that's where my mindset's at. I just want to say, too, that this isn't necessarily emblematic of my overall position on granting these types of waivers. I know that staff brought up a great point on this at the last meeting. I think this is a unique circumstance where this plan doesn't work without this. I think this is a unique circumstance where this plan doesn't work without this additional parking. It is on the far outskirts of, of that area, and it just doesn't work without it. And I do think, as the vice chair has said, that the underground parking is particularly thoughtful and a unique solution to this, so I am in favor as well. So with that, I don't know that we need a roll call vote, but all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. So that will be before city council at their to-be-determined meeting. Is there a motion for the second item?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval by a city council of a request from Dale Inman for a site plan approval located at 601 Abbott Road to construct a new condo building containing 32 units. The proposed development meets all applicable ordinance requirements. The proposal meets, or does meet the stand, or...
Yes, I should say meets.
Sorry, meets the standard of review identified in section 50-38 of the Code of Ordinances. And number three, the proposed use of the property is compatible with surrounding land uses and will not adversely impact the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties.
Thank you.
There are, I, my motion is with the six conditions listed. Do I need to read them?
No, you just say the six, six conditions in the, in the staff report.
Okay.
All right. Move by Vice Chair Wagner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Chapman. Discussion? Commissioner Overby?
I, I like this development. I think you've gone out of your way to try to fit it into this property. It's, it is quite an attractive development. I believe we need housing in downtown East Lansing, and I think this, this goes a long way towards that. And it is very, very thoughtful. I agree with the comments on parking. It's attractive, and, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens when you start selling the, the units.
Yep, I wish you well. It's a good project. It's high visibility. People will pass judgment as this is knocked down. The existing facility is knocked down, and the new building is constructed. So be prepped for that, but it's a great project, and I'm happy to support it.
Any comments down here? All right, yeah, I, I agree. I think it's a really unique use of, of market that hasn't really been tapped in the community. I love that it's bringing new housing down here. I think it's an overall improvement of what's on the site currently. Certainly cognizant of office space and future use of office space and how that market is trending. And appreciate the thoughtful adjustment on the bicycle parking, so I am also in support. So unless there's any other comments, we can go ahead and vote on this. All right, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. This item is also on to city council at a to-be-determined city council meeting. So, thank you. I appreciate you guys coming in, and best of luck with council. And thank you, Grace. All right, that takes us on to item 7.2. Consideration of proposed ordinance 1546, an amendment to section 50-94 of the zoning ordinance, which would change the process for developers seeking to transfer credits in association with the diverse housing requirement for certain developments in downtown East Lansing. Mr. Bartley?
Thank you. So yes, this is a zoning ordinance amendment that's proposed by Councilmember Meadows. Unfortunately, I guess he wasn't able to be here tonight. The, the proposal would prohibit transfer of credits between projects. The way the diverse housing requirement is currently set up, essentially if you, if you provide excess diverse housing units to meet the diverse housing requirement, if you provide units over that requirement, you could then use the credit of the excess units and transfer it to another property that could then use those, those units that you've transferred essentially towards their, their own diverse housing requirement. This proposed tax amendment would prohibit that, that sort of transfer for projects that are receiving local public funding, so some sort of local financial incentive. We had a discussion a little bit last time about sort of the reasoning behind this, and I unfortunately wasn't really able to answer that, I'm still not. But I guess without that information, this is what's proposed under the current ordinance amendment. I also want to mention that, as I, as I mentioned earlier in the written communications section, we did receive a letter today from a developer. This is, this is shown in your packet as an add-on. It came in pretty late. But the developer has comments and essentially is very, I think of, of reasonable paraphrasing would be, they're interested in looking at other parts of the diverse housing requirement and, and specifically called out, you know, you could look at different areas. You could have a fund, or you could have different requirements or different unit types. I don't believe that they spoke specifically to the proposed change. I think that they were somewhat opposed to proposed change. They felt like there are already barriers to development, but I don't want to speculate beyond that and potentially misrepresent what's in the letter. So I did want to bring that to your attention, though, and that's printed out for all of you. That said, I'd love to answer any questions, if I can. Can I answer any questions?
Just noting for the minutes, Commissioner Hendricks arrived at 7:26. Any questions for city staff?
Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of, like mechanically, I understand what this proposal, what this change is at, is recommending. I guess I'm just a little confused as, you know, still from last, last time. What are we trying to fix here? Or maybe better, a better question is, what behavior are we trying to encourage with this change? I know you said you don't have any more information from...
My, my understanding is that it's intended to, to sort of guard against the possibility of a transfer happening where, say, an affordable housing project that exceeds the number of affordable units required under the diverse housing requirement is proposed and says, we're going to transfer our excess credits to a different project. The different project gets built, and the affordable housing doesn't. If, if that were the case, then this would essentially disallow that from happening because it wouldn't have allowed the other, the receiving project to receive those transfer credits. I believe that's, that's the intent behind this ordinance amendment, but I am speculating based on my best understanding.
Yeah. So to be clear, this is seeking to avoid a situation where somebody wants to develop. They build the building, they want to transfer the 25% requirement on to a different site. This would make it so that they could not do that under, under certain circumstances.
That's correct. The, the transfer happens before either building is built. So during the, during the planning approval process, and that, I think, provides a sort of uncertainty. Whereas if you have this transfer that happens, and then the building that's transferring from doesn't get built, you've essentially gotten around the transfer, gotten around the requirement.
So the intent plainly is just to circumvent that type of activity. To circumvent...
I believe so. I'm not sure if there are other intents, but I believe that that's the primary intent.
To prevent a developer from circumventing the 25% requirement.
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Commissioner Overby?
Is that circumvention happening now?
I'm not aware. I, I'm not aware of any that have happened, anything like, like this has happened since I've been here since September 2023, so.
So this would address a problem that has not occurred?
That's correct. I'm, I'm not, I'm not certain if it has.
Vice Chair?
I do have a, so Chuck, do you remember Building C? That was never built by Valley Court Park?
I do.
So this wouldn't stop that from happening, right? It would, like, because the builder just didn't build the low-income housing that they were supposed to build. I mean, could we add something on here to say that they have the builder, whoever has to build the 25% requirement first? So, I mean, because that, are there any, do we have any teeth or any way to say, like, to a, to a builder, like, if they don't build the 25%, what are they going to do? Are they going to raise the building that they've built already? Or, like, I don't, I don't understand if there's any other punishment or incentives to build whatever.
I, I think that that would be an alternative to what's proposed. And we could, I, I would say we wouldn't probably take the action to raise a building, but you would, you wouldn't give this certificate of occupancy to a building or, or maybe issue permits to have it be built without having the first one be built. I'm not certain whether or not the scenario that you mentioned is, is the reason for this ordinance. It may be. I'm not, I'm not certain.
So a follow-up to that is, does city staff have contingencies in place? Or have they discussed potential enforcement actions they could take if there was a situation like that that were to happen, and if somebody were to not build the separate building with a 25% diversified housing?
I, I would, I would suggest that in that case, we would probably come back to the council, if not planning commission as well.
Okay.
Right now, we don't have the ordinance basis to say, no, you cannot build that building before this one. Currently.
Yeah, and I know we're delving into a bit of a discussion territory, but I think that's, that's the same concern I have as well, is I just don't know how, how clear this is. And my understanding of, I, I'm obviously able to read the words on the page, but it seems like it's a, it's a very broad approach to solving a very specific issue. So I would love more details on the impetus and why this is the only possible solution to solve a hypothetical situation that may or may not have occurred already.
So I just chime in. Ryan, I appreciated your question, and I'm, I'm a little confused as well. I think I'm sensing a little of that up here. Did you get an answer to your question, Ryan? And if so, could you translate the answer for me?
Well, I mean, from what it seems like, we, we, we're kind of dealing with hypotheticals right now, so it's not really clear, you know, and, and Landon has answered as best as he can. But I, I think it, personally, I would really like to hear what Councilman Meadows has to say. Like, just like, what is his reasoning for it? And what's an example that this would have had impact on in recent, you know, memory? Just because I'm not, I'm understanding the mechanics, I'm not understanding the intent.
Yes.
I think that'd be helpful. I think that's where, where my mind is at, too. I don't want to vote no on it if there's a potential really good explanation as to why this would be a, a great move for the city to make. So I would suggest, what's the term? It's not tabling, it's just postponing it until the, until the next planning commission meeting, if he's able to...
So if, if you couldn't do the trading off, and someone asked for that, that could still be accomplished by an amendment or an exemption? Or, I mean, if it made, if there was some situation that came forward that everyone agreed made sense, how would you enable that if this language was in place?
If this language were adopted, we would not be able to enable it without an ordinance amendment.
Without an amendment to the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's a really good point, too, because there could be a scenario where this is the only viable way to get the 25% diversified housing, and it would preclude that from, that development possibly from happening. So, yeah, I think that's a, that's a really good flag.
Yes, that's another good point.
What's the will of the commission? Does anyone want to make a motion to vote on this? Or to, we don't need a motion to postpone this? We can just not take action on it, correct?
Correct. I think that a motion would give you the opportunity to be specific on what information you're looking for.
Okay.
But no, you don't need to necessarily make a motion or a roll call vote.
Would anyone like to make a motion of any sort?
I mean, I can make a motion for postponement. If we can get more information from Councilman Meadows, that'd be fine.
Okay.
So I, I move to postpone this agenda item until the next planning commission meeting, until we can get some additional information from Councilman Meadows as to the intent behind the change to the...
To the ordinance?
Yes, ordinance.
Good move by Commissioner Potts. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Overby. Any discussion?
I just, this is a good idea. We need more information. I feel like we're shooting in the dark, and let's get some, some information to help us.
Yeah, thank you. And I think I need some time to digest this letter, but I think I just have some overall questions about the efficacy of the 25% diversified housing requirement in general. I think its, its goals are noble and align with the comprehensive master plan, but I don't know how effective it's been, and it potentially could have been a limitation to some valuable things. So, yeah, encouraged by postponing it and looking forward to a later discussion. So with that, is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of postponing agenda item 7.2 to the next planning commission meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay. Motion carries. This item is postponed to a subsequent planning commission meeting. All right, that takes us on to new business. Up next is item 8.1, a special use request from 213 Ann Street, Inc. For approval to modify the interior spaces at 213 Ann Street for expansion of the Fieldhouse Sports Bar into adjacent Suite B with alcohol service and conversion of vacant Suite C to be used as a pizza shop with, without alcohol service in the existing building. The property is Zoned B3, City Center Commercial District. Ms. Wrighton?
Alicia Wrighton, Planning Department. Planning commission saw this project initially on November 13th, '24, and voted to recommend approval with several conditions to the city council. City council had their public hearing on February 4th of 2025. Staff had seen several iterations of the plan and what was presented after that February 4th included changes to the existing fieldhouse space. The customer had requested postponement, and eventually council deferred that plan back to the planning commission. They made that decision on March 8th due to those different iterations of plans that had come through the office. What you see before you now is their final layout for the redistribution of the numbers and spaces. Their original special use permit approve, approval for occupancy back in 2010 was for 330 occupants, and the current proposal still shows 330, only with a redistribution of those numbers into the Suites B and Suite C. Two things to note, the original plan that you saw, I believe, had the Suite B having private spaces for private events and a dance floor. That has now just been converted because in reality, there wasn't any separation. It could be just people in general. Councilman Altman had concern about one of the site plan conditions for cause or continuation of a concentration of alcohol sales and services. Again, they already had 330 for an occupancy, and that is a redistribution of what is there. Planning commission's recommendations are included in your plan from their December 11th recommendation of approval. From that, Councilman Meadows had requested review of the old conditions from the 2010 approval. So if you choose to vote tonight or at your next meeting, there is a sample motion which incorporates the applicable conditions from the original 2010, as well as a few additional items. I can take any questions.
Questions for city staff? Are they changing their hours at all? Are the hours the same? Okay. So to be clear, so previously when we saw this, it was a separate kind of special event space, and now it's all proposed as just one connected restaurant?
So Suites A and B are one unit, if you will.
Under this proposal, the new proposal, yeah.
And they were, and the applicant is here to correct me if I misstate something, but they had looked at it for being private parties and special events. But now, after just the recognition that anybody can wander over there theoretically, they've identified the specific area as a bar and seats and the number of seats per space. The pizza shop, it's called Side Piece, also will serve other things besides pizza. It is its own thing, and the only reason it was included in this application was because they were sharing the kitchen.
And they no longer are, right?
No, they still have.
They still are?
Yeah.
Still sharing the, the kitchen?
They have a kitchen area in the side piece, but there's, the main cooking is done in the shared kitchen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions, but I defer to the commission first. Commissioner Chapman?
No, no, you know, my, my comments are better stated after we have a motion on the table. So I'll pause right...
the table, so we'll pause right now.
Sounds good. Clarification on the occupancy, so it's 330 total for all three suites?
Correct.
So, that was what they were approved for in 2010?
Correct.
Okay. So, there's no connection between the pizza restaurant, I forget, is that Suite C?
Correct.
So, there's no connection between that and Suites A and B? So, you can't have somebody that's in the main restaurant and then leaving to go get a slice of pizza in the pizza place? They would have to go outside the building?
Correct.
And around? Okay. But the total occupancy for everything, despite them kind of operating as two separate things, is 330 combined?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for.
They can get into the bar that way.
Oh, I see, I see. All right. Any additional questions for city staff? Commissioner Overby?
I ended up being not completely clear on why the city council bounced this back to us again. So, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that in the material and I don't understand it. Can you help me?
I saw no less than 12 plans.
Yeah.
The Planning Commission and City Council saw three or four. The applicant had requested for the February 18th, which would have been the anticipated vote from City Council to postpone because they were working through some of the questions that had come up from City Council as far as North Arrow and where the street was and so forth. And in doing so, they then added some changes to the original fieldhouse, which wasn't part of the project as applied for, for special use, added a party room.
Right.
Which was a complete change from what was presented to Planning Commission and DDA. With that, there had been concern that the Planning Commission hadn't seen what they had proposed, so council deferred it back for review. And in the meantime, they've reverted back to a very similar situation, only now that's not party rooms, it's a just open scenario. It's not VIP suite, I think is what it was called before. So, it is very similar to what you saw, but there were so many iterations in between what you saw, council, to where we are today. And since they made the recommendation or the motion to return it, it had to come back to you.
Thank you.
And it will have to go to DDA as well.
That answers my question. It's going to go back to DDA as well.
On June 5th.
Okay. Thank you. I believe the applicant is here, if you want to come up and address the commission.
Alicia did a good job kind of explaining why we're here. This is substantially the same as what you approved in the past. At this point, we're trying to convert this space into a, instead of a bar that has food, to a restaurant that serves more drinks. The, the layout, as Alicia said, is going to have 330 occupants, like what was approved in, in 2010. I'm happy to take any other questions you might have, but she laid out really what's, what we're looking at today. And we would request that, if possible, to have a vote on this tonight.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I'll ask a question. Joseph. So, theoretically, before we vote, the one thing, I reviewed the video from the city council, reviewed this really nice report from Planning Commission or from the Planning Department, Alicia, thank you for that, and it appears to me that the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and you guys did your part as well. The one thing that I just want to make a comment on, I'll probably, if we get to a motion tonight, will address, I think it was Councilmember Meadows that addressed the issue of the 12:00 midnight shutdown or closing of the outdoor area. And he cited, you know, the police department and the neighbors and the older occup, the occupants in the neighborhood that might be a little, 55 and older. So, I might suggest in a motion tonight to reduce that to 10:00 PM versus midnight, the outside area, if I'm understanding that correctly. If that motion were to appear, would you be able to accommodate that and be receptive to that input?
Good idea.
I guess I need to look to the owner here. I'm the architect on the project, I can't really speak to the, the hours of the business.
You would not like to? Yes. You might not like to stay at midnight.
Okay, so I assume that's, can we dialogue here a little bit?
Sure.
So, yeah, yeah, just explain your rationale behind that so I can better understand. I think this is something that came up in city council and there's a little language in here that suggests we should probably address that. So, let's address it, please.
Sure. So, my name is Amos Mann. I grew up in East Lansing. I went to kindergarten through high school. I graduated from Michigan State in 2005, so I think I know the city almost as well as anybody here. So, I am pretty in tune with the community. I live in East Lansing right now and so I've got a lot of pressure from my social network amongst other people in the community to do a little, something a little different. So, that's why I ended up bringing Jason Bamford, who you guys, you know, met in the last hearing, and like, you know, Ken said, we are trying to elevate our food experience and provide food throughout most of the day because, you know, we lease property 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So, I am trying to maximize the investment that I have in that property. And so, I don't think that us operating outside or, you know, up until midnight, I mean, we're in harmony with what's happening downtown East Lansing.
That's an associated question. So, I don't know what the other establishments are doing downtown outside. There must be some consistency. Are they open until midnight?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's multiple businesses down there that are making plenty of noise.
Okay.
So, I don't understand why we would be singled out once it was, it was originally approved back in 2010. We are in harmony with what's actually happening down there.
Okay. All right. That answers my question. Alicia?
I think it confirmed that the 2010 special use permit was for midnight?
Yeah. No, I see that and it shows up in your report that it was midnight and it shows up again.
And has been.
It still showed up in the city council meeting that we needed to discuss, address that very issue. But if the outside establishment, if the establishments in the summer outside are open until midnight and there's consensus that that is the case, then this sort of nullifies my question and my concern. Still think it's, you know, I guess it doesn't nullify my concern. I think Councilmember Meadows raises a good question. There's a little input from the police department here in this report, the night police commander suggests that noise could be a problem. So, at a bare minimum, we have this on record in a public meeting that we're concerned about that and I, too, am a K-12 graduate of the East Lansing Public Schools, so there you go. There's more than one in the room.
That's awesome.
All right. All right. So, I think that's my question and my concern. Okay.
Alicia, can you confirm, so Hop Cat is open until midnight, the outside space next door?
Hop Cat doesn't have an outdoor space, but across the street?
Hop Cat doesn't? It does. It's literally right next door.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the wrong one. Yeah, to my knowledge, all of our outdoor seating is till midnight.
Okay.
With the exception, there's one down on Grand River is 11.
Sometimes just because they're authorized to stay until midnight, they might not. They might have a business policy that closes earlier. I don't know what they do, but.
Good question though. Any other questions or comments? I just had a couple quick questions. So, I know there's an upstairs space, we haven't talked about that at all. Is that going to maintain the same use? That's like special rental for special events, right? Or you open it for big events sometimes? What's that used for now?
So, let's, let's be clear. I mean, we've always said that this was going to be a bar, but we do have a lot of special or private events.
Yeah.
So, that was, you know, like I said, we're trying to elevate the experience and bring in a different crowd. So, upstairs will be, you know, open as a bar, but we do have, I mean, we've had probably 15 different events in the last, like, 60 days up there, so it does get used quite a bit.
So, primarily for special events, but it is open to the public sometimes for like a large game day weekend or something?
Exactly.
Okay. And then, are you keeping the Fieldhouse name?
Yes.
Okay, keeping the Fieldhouse name? And then, you said the menu is going to have more of a finer dining focus?
It's a sports bar, so it's going to be better than what it is today and I would, I would like to argue that it's going to be the best food downtown East Lansing has to offer.
Now, that sounds like, that sounds like an East Lansing high school grandeur.
If you, if you had Jason's food, you'd, I think you'd agree with me as well.
All right. I don't have any additional questions. Is anybody else? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there a, a motion so we can discuss this?
I'm glad to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve, I move to, to recommend approval of a special use permit from 213 Ann Street Incorporated, owner St. Ann LLC, to modify the interior space at 213 Ann Street for expansion of the Fieldhouse Sports Bar into adjacent Suite B with alcohol service and conversion of vacant Suite C to be used as a pizza slash sandwich shop without alcohol service in the existing building for the following reasons. Oops, sorry, I lost my space here.
Here's our cut.
Oh, thank you, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you. For the following reasons, the proposed development does meet all applicable ordinance requirements. The proposal does meet the standards of review identified in Sections 50-38 and 50-94 parentheses A of the Code of Ordinances. The proposed use of the, of the property is compatible with surrounding land uses and will not adversely impact the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties. The following conditions of approval shall apply. There are five conditions listed in the staff report.
There's more.
There's more? Oh, I'm sorry.
Plus the previously approved.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, oh, number six, excuse me. The following conditions of approval for the 2010 SUP to the extent not inconsistent with the above requirements shall remain in force. And there are.
A through K.
Yes, A through K in the staff report.
Well said. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by, moved by Commissioner Overby, seconded by Commissioner Chape. Discussion?
I'll, I'll just make a quick comment here. I think we've done a pretty good job with this, you know, a couple months ago and I appreciate the feedback from the city council and how process works in the city of East Lansing and so on and so forth. So, I think my question was the one that we answered tonight. I'm glad we brought that out in public discussion, I think that needed to be out here. But I'm, I'm comfortable voting to move this back to the city council, thanks to the Planning Department for your extended review, noting, too, that Downtown Development Authority will review this as well. So, I'm going to be thumbs up tonight.
Any other comments? Commissioner Potts, did you have?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Seth. I think the point is the building is, is already there, right? So, you're, you're setting them up to be successful. You know, they're adding the takeout place, which is a nice touch, I think. There's surprisingly is kind of a lack of takeout places in that vicinity. I think the patio concerns are valid and I hope they, they take those into consideration and they do monitor that and make sure that it's not a nuisance for the surrounding areas. You know, I, I wouldn't necessarily support changing that because they already approved to keep those, those same hours and I don't want to punish them unless there's a situation I'm unaware of. So, yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor, so. Press Chair.
I have just one quick question.
Yeah.
I should have asked this before.
Question for staff or?
Or maybe it's just a comment. I don't know. So, when I go running by there, there's a television to the wall, right? And I'm looking at J here, I, I didn't look at the 2010 requirements very, very closely. It says, "No library recording music or telecommunications device shall be provided in the outdoor service area, which is audible from any adjacent residential property."
Yeah.
Does that include a television?
I can address that. They're using it as a sign when it's open.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's not, I go by there at 6:00 in the morning, it's not on, so.
It shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry for not bringing that up earlier.
Good point. All right. Seeing no additional comments, ready for a vote on this. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Ayes have it, so this Agenda Item 8.1 is on to city council. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks so much, I appreciate it.
All right. It takes us on to item number nine, commissioner concerns. Is there any announcements or concerns from commissioners going once? We're about to set a, oh.
I do have a quick.
We all set the record for under an hour.
It expresses my, my lack of, of knowledge perhaps, but on, on the disclosure of conflicts of interest, I, I'm not aware of anything that gives us any guidance or, or, or parameters on this. And it seems to be that I look at the items that are proposed and make a decision whether I think I have a conflict of interest. And, and is that correct and is that good enough?
Yes, essentially. I, I think, number one, we, we do have guidance in the form of a form that staff and councilmembers fill out every year and we can include that in a packet if you'd like to see it again. But essentially, yes, you, you consider, do I have a conflict? Would I, would, could I benefit somehow from approval or from a decision here? And then, if you, if you feel like you do have a conflict or you cannot be, for some reason, you're too close to the project, to the applicant, you would then bring that up to the, to the commission and the commission would make a decision as to whether or not you have a conflict.
So, we could have some discussion on it?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Good. Thank you. Good point.
You know, on that note, I shared a concern that I saw in advance and asked Landon to review that and he then turned it over to our city attorney and they said, there was no conflict of interest, but I saw that in advance and really appreciated your follow-up on that, so that's another methodology, I suppose, we could tap into if need be.
Thank you, guys. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Potts, seconded by Commissioner Overby. All's in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:57 PM. Under an hour, guys.